Pat McGavil here. So, March 11th, 2013, meeting of our Brown Book Planning Commission is called Order. First order is to approve the minutes from our last February 25th meeting. Your motion?
Thanks.
We'll do it in discussion. Do we need to have a motion?
I approve the minutes.
Okay.
From February 25th.
Now, we need a second. Say, "Second," will you?
Second.
Okay. So, now, let's have a little discussion.
I can't discuss because I wasn't here, so I leave it to other votes.
What, you said you had a couple seconds?
Again, these are really big. I forgot what I said, but that Jim arrived and that Timberly departed.
Okay, so that's in the admission, I mean, the attendance.
Seven-ten, but Jim Brazino arrived at 6:10?
Uh-huh.
Departed. That's seven-ten.
Departed, that sounds and counts.
Oh, it's only had the first.
Serious business.
It just reminds me of Jack Nicholson with a Boston accent.
Jack Nicholson attempting a Boston accent. Anybody else?
He's from New Jersey.
Anybody else?
Well, you walked over here.
I don't know. It looks good to me. Okay, so, then, we'll vote. All those in favor with Ms. McLaughlin's amendments? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Announcements? I have none. Stan?
I have one.
The...
You've got notification of a symposium called "Upstream Downtowning: Making Room for the River and Building Resiliency in Vermont's..." Oh, upstream downtown, sorry. "Making Room for the River and Building Resiliency in Vermont's Downtowns and Villages." It's going to be Monday, April 8th, at 7:00 PM in Burlington.
Gone.
The old made big town in Vermont, foul river.
It seems very much like the one that we went to in Wilmington.
Well, no, this is... We're not familiar with these presenters.
They're not from here.
One is from the Lincoln Land Institute.
Lincoln Institute of Land Policy. Yeah, they're good.
Yeah.
Very good, actually.
Yep. So, I'll pass this around.
That's the night of the Planning Commission meeting, is it?
Yeah, I might have to miss the Planning Commission. We could take a field trip.
I would actually be down for that.
We seriously didn't speak about going to it.
Field trips are fun, you know?
You want to go on a bus all the way to Burlington and back?
They could end up taping it or something.
We just got it today, so we didn't get a chance to.
I didn't want to take a week.
Okay, any announcements from anybody else?
Juggle on the side.
Yeah, it's not planning commission related, but it's town-related. I just signed up to be part of the composting program, and I've already been playing with my trash, and this is mostly for you and for the viewers out there. I realized I have almost no trash now that I looked at what I can compost.
That's... Jim said the same thing last week, didn't he? So, I've signed up as well.
Paper plates, paper napkins, toilet tissues, paper towels, all that stuff, fiber egg cartons, milk cartons without the plastic lid, almost everything composts besides food waste, so I'm left with very little. So, I think that's a good thing for people to embrace, and the tipping fees will be less for the town and less taxes, maybe, you know? Or taxes can go to something else worthwhile. That's my opinion.
There's also a third alternative, but... There's no public here tonight, so we'll skip over public comment. Nobody else had anything, right? We'll skip over public comment, and I'm hoping that...
Well, it's free.
Huh?
Excuse me.
Oh, curbside compost?
No.
Well, this is free. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just talking to myself. I spent too much time alone this week.
You'd be careful talking to yourself with a microphone present.
I know.
So, we have three articles of our proposed subdivisions, and hopefully, we've got a chance to look at them, and we'll have this impromptu roundtable handy for a nice roundtable discussion. I guess it's a square table.
Really roundtable, good.
Yeah. So, who wants to throw out the first pitch?
Do you want to talk about the building envelopes first?
Yeah, sure. Was everybody here at the last meeting?
Nope.
No?
No, we weren't. No, you were.
Well, there was some brief discussion. There's discussion about when you subdivide, as part of the subdivision process, having the seller designate a building envelope, and that way, they can designate resources that should be conserved or pieces of land where it's not desirable to build. And the DRB or the zoning administrator will have some opportunity to make sure that the land will be used properly. And some of the commissioners were concerned that we wanted to give a potential buyer the opportunity to get out of a bad envelope if the seller was just kind of rushing and, you know, designated an area where a buyer might not want to build, but might otherwise be suitable.
So, that's what C is about?
That's what this is about.
Yeah, that's what this memo is about. So, the proposal here is the way that other towns in Vermont are doing it, that is, if you're changing the approved plat, it's changed the plat, so you go back before the Development Review Board. And so, what I... So, I made that clear under the section that deals with revisions to an approved subdivision plan. And then, we also thought, well, maybe, we could narrow down what would be required to present before the DRB, because a lot of the material will be existing. It's a newer subdivision. And so, they would need to have a written explanation or justification for the building envelope modification, and then, they would need a survey of that property or, you know, a drawing of that property. Eventually, you'd have to have a survey, so that would be required, that had some basic information, such as road names, lot number, where the approved building envelope is and where the proposed one is, steep slopes, which Liz gave me a comment on, vegetation, watercourses, wetlands, and any existing and proposed buildings and structures.
Is that... Are all those things new, or are they already part of the original subdivision, and this is just repeat if you want to modify?
If it's a major subdivision, those items would be required.
I have another comment.
We haven't... Sorry, we haven't completely gotten through all of that yet.
Defining what constitutes significant vegetation.
Okay.
Right.
And where does it say something about steep slopes in it?
It's a suggestion from Liz to have that.
Oh, my fault. She's suggesting it be added, which I would agree, with specifying the percentage.
Why a survey rather than a sketch?
The requirements of planning, just for the most part.
Yeah, I mean, we could, for the purposes of application, have a more... It wouldn't have to be a survey prepared by a land surveyor necessarily for our purpose of going before the DRB, but we want it to be pretty specific.
But don't you have to have a survey to have subdivision?
You do. So, you would eventually have to do one anyway.
Right. So, you could... You know, it's the conflict. Customarily, the applicant wants to push off any costs associated with development to a latest possible date, because it's closest to the purchase price that they're paid by the buyer. And so, in the instance of my, you know, small subdivisions, it's something that could, you know, could be... Wait. But the requirement, you know, the state, basically, it's spelled out in statute that if you're going to mess with, you know, the D through subdividing a parcel, it has to be done by a land surveyor. So, there's some added work for the land surveyor to do. It doesn't have to be... I mean, it can be illustrative at the beginning. It doesn't have to be definitive. It doesn't have to be something that the surveyor is comfortable with stamping, but eventually, it is going to have to be something that they're comfortable with stamping.
The only reason I ask is because what they'd be doing would essentially be the same mapping of the property that would have happened at the time of the first subdivision, right?
Yes.
Isn't that kind of redundant?
No, because it might change, and that's what you want to see.
Right.
Yeah. One of the reasons I had backed off from a sketch or I had left the survey is because I imagined that most people, for the purposes of discussion, are going to pull a copy of the subdivision plat that was recorded and just focus in on their property, so it might actually be done on a surveyed plat, but they'll be sketching in where they want the new building envelope.
Would that be acceptable?
I...
As long as you've got a surveyor that's saying that, you know, this circle, whatever the shape is that you want to give the building envelope, you know... In other words, it's one thing to have somebody just make a copy of a plat, you know, of a subdivision survey in the town clerk's office and say, you know, get their pencil right in front of you, go, "I think I want it kind of like here," versus having it, you know, taking it home or handing it to the surveyor and saying, "Right, 50 feet in from this tree and 80 feet from this pin and 95 feet from this pin, those are the points that we're going to draw for the building envelope," and have the surveyor actually look at the scale of the plan that's recorded in the town clerk's office and do, you know, to scale and all that kind of stuff. I mean, so, in other words, you know, there's a big difference between you and I getting our crayons out and going somewhere in here versus the surveyor saying, "Actually, it's going to be right here."
Well, the surveyor identifies in minute detail what exists.
Right.
So, he can definitely identify the existing lots and the vegetation and the watercourses and the wetlands and the structures and the steep slopes. He can't pinpoint the location of the building envelope, because it's not real.
Right.
So, it'll have to be a scaled drawing of what's being proposed.
Right. Right. So, there's fixed objects in the landscape that the surveyor uses to describe and define the parcel boundaries and the nature of the parcel. And what you're doing is imposing, if you like, another layer on that, which is a proposed building envelope, which is relational. The way you're going to do that is fix it to those points that the surveyor already knows.
So, the surveyor is, in essence, sketching it in, in the same way that an engineer would or an architect or anybody, because it's not.
And it's not complicated. I mean, there are just sort of basic tools that they would employ. I mean, they're just going to... They're going to be familiar with working in scale, and they're going to understand exactly what's required in terms of how to describe this envelope.
Does your concern stem from the fact that it might be expensive?
Not necessarily expensive, but just onerous.
I would say it's no more onerous than the original requirement to do the survey.
Yeah. No, my only concern is that it sort of feels like you're doing the same thing that's just been done.
Well, you know what? They're going to borrow... The new one's going to borrow from the old, and it's really, essentially, an exercise, unless there's new elements.
Right.
To have the proposed envelope in.
To put it in perspective, to get... For the most of the parcels that we're talking about, well, I shouldn't say that, in the rural and rural residential districts where the expectation could be that they're on... They have a well and a septic. You have the surveyor and the engineer getting the permit for the septic and the well in exactly the same ways. So, they've got to identify an area where the original septic system is going to be installed. They're going to have to identify where the backup system is going to go, and they're going to have to make sure that those things are far enough away from the wellhead. So... And then, that they relate to the house and the driveway and all those other things. So, in other words, there's a lot of work going on on the plan, on the subdivision plan as it is, to show all these features, because each one of these things is something that has to be pinned down between the developer and/or the owner, the final owner of the house.
I just can't recall. Are we clear that it has to be a survey from the seller's position as well? Let me do the envelope.
The seller has to identify the envelope.
Yeah.
Because the seller is the developer in this instance.
Does it matter?
Does it matter where the building envelope is or why we're requiring?
No, no. Does it matter who's paying for it? Because you almost want the person who's going to have a real stake in the property to be the one... To identify the building envelope. That's what we talked about last time in the meeting. And so... Well, it doesn't necessarily follow that when someone's subdividing, there's going to be a buyer at hand. They could just be subdividing, and we want them to identify a building envelope. But then, there's another element that we discussed and added in, that there's going to be... The buyer is going to have the opportunity to modify that building envelope easily when their time comes.
Yeah.
And what we need the seller to do, because they're fulfilling the role of the developer, is to ensure that it fits, that you can establish a building envelope and that it's going to work, right? And so, that's their obligation. If the subsequent owner comes along after having bought it from the seller and wants the building envelope relocated, then their obligation is to show that their new preferred location also works. So, we're leaving an opportunity open, but we've got that information... We've got the same information that they're working with, which is, this is what you bought. When you bought this parcel of land, you bought it with the seller saying, "This is the permitted building envelope, and this is how it relates to the site." So, if you don't like that, that's okay, but you're going to be paying for the work that's involved in establishing an alternate site. During the seller's sales, the first time, you know, they're going to want to get back their costs of selling it, which include the survey work, the legal work, you know, all the transaction costs associated with subdividing a parcel. And so, you know, the price should include that.
But we haven't narrowed in on the size of a building envelope either. We had talked about a fairly large one.
One acre?
Large one.
I think one thing we should make clear is that a modification of a building envelope doesn't necessarily have to change the shape of an original envelope. You know what I mean? I'm thinking of really big parcels here where a so-called modification could, in fact, be a different envelope.
Oh, I see what you mean. It could be a new...
Yeah. Yeah, like if you had a 30-acre parcel, and there was this one acre here, and you wanted one acre back there, you don't want... You don't want to... If we want them to be able to do that, you would run into a hurdle, I think, when the DRB said, "Well, wait a second. Is this a modification, or are they putting a new second building envelope on it?" You know what I mean?
I do know what you mean. I know what you mean. I mean, I... Well, no, wait, let me back up. Are you saying you want them to be able to put a second building envelope on and then choose? Like, you don't think there just needs to be one building envelope beside it?
I think this gets more important the bigger the parcel is, and my personal feeling is that doing what I just described, having a new building envelope that's not necessarily contiguous with the old, as long as it's still not messing with some valuable resource on the land, should be okay.
I think from the bigger picture, that's a problem, and it's even more important on the bigger parcels actually to have the one envelope and know where the development's going, because it could...
Are you talking about choice?
Yeah, certainly. Yeah. So, what you're saying is, you've got a 30-acre parcel, the seller is required to identify a building envelope. They identify one.
Yeah, and let's just call it a flat field for the sake of imagination.
You could have the buyer eventually say, "Okay, all these features..." You know, it's totally homogenous. There's exactly... Every 100 square feet, there's exactly one tree, and there's no water, there's no features that make it... That restrict me. Why can't I have my one acre over in that corner rather than in this corner? And the answer would be, "Well, there's no reason why you can't. It's just that that's the one you've got." So, what you're saying is, can the seller identify multiple building envelopes, and then, when the owner chooses one, that's the one, and there's no others?
No. I'm saying that if the buyer wants, once they've purchased the land, to build somewhere other than the current envelope that would otherwise be suitable, but it's far away from the building envelope, if they applied to modify the building envelope, they wouldn't really be modifying it with what they were doing. They'd be asking for essentially a new building envelope.
A replacement building.
A replacement building envelope. And I don't think you need the multiples, just for one to take the place of the other.
Wasn't there a sheet about that?
I thought there was.
There was some sort of...
Yeah.
I thought I did a definition, but I'm not seeing it.
So, for the purposes of clarity, yeah, it should be that there's a procedure for establishing an alternate building envelope, which necessarily eliminates what was previously addressed by, or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, you don't want this weird... What does that mean, a second one?
Right.
Repositioned is a better word, I think.
Well, isn't it... Wouldn't you just go through the same process all over again, because this is a revision?
Oh, yeah, I agree, but I would... Under this, I could see someone saying, who didn't want this, "Well, it's not really a modification, because you're not changing that envelope. You're deleting it, or you're replacing it."
You're replacing it.
Replacing it, yeah.
Well, that's a modification. It's a modification to the subdivision plan.
The buyer would say it's a modification, and the seller would say it's not a modification, and the DRB, I think, should have some guidance.
Well, it's a replacement of the building envelope, but it's a revision to the subdivision plan.
I guess that's true.
We can... They can be done a couple of ways. I mean, we can make it more clear here, or we can add a definition. I've seen definitions where...
However we do it, I think is fine. I just... I think we should try to remove ambiguity.
How do accessory structures play into this? Farms, sheds, busyboes?
They're in the building envelope.
Yeah, they would be located within the building envelope.
The building envelope's not going to be drawn so tight that it's going to be an issue trying to squeeze all that stuff in.
Could there be elements of the building envelope that are not contiguous?
That's a good question.
Did you say even sheds would have to be in it?
Generally, it's the limits of clearing.
Yes. So, yeah, think of it in terms of limits of disturbance.
That includes septic?
It doesn't have to... I would say in most instances, thinking somewhat personally, when you're confronted with a hillside full of trees and rocks, for the sake of convenience, you're going to allocate the house, and as soon as... And even that, really, that discussion happens in the context of, "Well, where's the septic going to go?" And so, what you really end up having is this bizarre conversation with an engineer going, "No, you can't have the house there. Why not?" "Well, because this is the only place you can have a septic, and that's uphill from the septic, so, you know, no, no, that's downhill from the septic, which means you have to pump up. So, no, this is where the septic's going to go, and you can either have your house there, or you can have your house there, and you go, 'Okay.'" You just choose, and so, it's pretty much over. And then, somebody comes along with a bulldozer and an excavator and clears the trees, and it's the driveway, it's the house site, and it's the septic field. And it's pretty much... And you want to... I mean, you can spend a lot more money and go, "Oh, no, I don't want to be able to see where the septic is from my house," but it's a lot more work to maneuver around with the soil and the trees and stuff. Generally, what they do is they make an opening in the woods that's big enough to fit the house, the driveway, the septic, the garage, or whatever.
Right. We're not getting into site plan territory by identifying the septic now.
Are we getting into site plan territory? No. I would say no on a subdivision.
Right.
I just don't want to do things that are normally the purview of the other...
Right.
What about solar?
I think we could... We need to work through the building envelopes in what will be Article III, which are the design standards. I mean, we could come up with things that are exemptions, you know, like solar panels or something like that. But generally, because it's the limits of clearing, the limits of disturbance, you know, that takes...
What I'd say here is that, for the most part, we're thinking about the subdivisions of fairly large parcels into smaller parcels, and the possibility even of clustering and all those kinds of things. But we're, for the most part, thinking about fairly big pieces of land that would be disturbed. And so, I don't think we will, again, to get back to the subject of how big this building envelope would be, it's not going to be so tightly drawn that you could just put a house into it and maybe not a shed, or a house and not a solar panel, or assuming that you wanted to mount it off of the roof. So, basically, the area of disturbance should be big enough so that you could design passive solar gain. So, in other words, choose plantings and/or leave trees in place that are deciduous and allow winter solar access to the south side, and that would also then allow solar panels to be effective. So, yeah, I mean, I don't think we're going to draw these little envelopes so tight that you wouldn't get that.
I'm just concerned that we're adding so much into what constitutes a building envelope that we're getting away from subdivision.
I don't think this... I don't think that the building envelope should necessarily be specified so clearly in the subdivision rings that it covers these things. I think that it goes to the... For me, in my mind at least, it goes to the question of how big we should have the building envelope, you know, just the dimensions of it, and then, maybe, what geometric shape it should possess. So, I guess the one I have in my mind is something like two overlapping circles, almost like a figure eight, and so, you could stretch it, you know, in one dimension, or you could stretch it in another, right?
Isn't that the same symbol as infinity?
Yes, actually. And that's what we would tell them.
Yeah, but as soon as you start drawing circles, and you're talking about... I think that could get really complicated for somebody who is trying to follow the rules and make sure that they're staying in that building envelope. I mean, how do you... When you're on the site, you're like, "Okay, well, I want to get as close to, what shall we call it, as the view is possible." So, all of a sudden, it's a circle so abstract.
Yeah, in survey terms, a circle is that fairly difficult thing to draw, because, yeah, you want straight lines.
Why do we have to designate a shape? Is area not enough?
Well, I don't want to go too, like, mathy on you here.
No, that's okay.
There's always a freaky aspect to this.
My dad's a math teacher. My whole life story.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Mine was just impatient about the whole thing. So, you could have two... Let me do it.
Well, I'm thinking, before you go too far, I'm actually thinking there could be benefits by not saying the shape because of topography-wise. Well, I'm thinking, before, before you go too far, I'm actually thinking there could be benefits by not saying the shape because of topography wise. We might, we might want one that's a little more irregular.
Yeah. Imagine, you could either have one circle that's bigger or smaller, and then, so the dimensions that could change is that this area of overlap, you could change it. And then, the requirement could be that the owner, or the potential builder, show a regular shape somewhere inside the two circles, right? So you can survey that because it's a regular shape.
I just don't understand why this is better than saying, okay, you've got X square feet to work with. I mean, what are we worried about them doing?
Well, if you identify the wetlands and all these other features, you want to make sure that the building envelope excludes them.
Yeah, but a building envelope, if it intruded on any of that under the rules we've got, would just be rejected, wouldn't it?
Would it be seen as readily?
Well, it's one of the ways that we can.
I mean, I thought that's the whole point of making them do the identifying of resources and then putting the envelope on that.
Yeah.
I just feel like parcels are so weird in this undulating town that we have. I mean, my, my own house, it's like a nice little plateau, and then there's a huge cliff. And if you, if you look at the building envelope, it was just like, ideal space to build, it would be an odd, like trapezoid with a rectangle attached.
Right.
That's the buildable area, and then you'd incorporate the setbacks, and I assume that most lots are like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think Timbly's point that it's really hard to survey a circle, you know, mark out a circle on the ground so that you know the extent of the disturbance. See, that's a point well taken. So maybe it does have to be a regular shape. I guess what I was trying to get at was, the notion that with two overlapping circles, like a Venn diagram, you can, you know.
Give more choice.
You can give more choice and it's more free form, right? But then maybe, so maybe what it is, is a regular shape within, within the boundaries of that. So, in other words, if you think of the role here, that the DRB defines the blue circles, and then the owner comes back and shows.
Why would you put that work on the DRB? Isn't this all the applicant and his surveyor identifying these things and presenting them to the DRB?
The circle's potentially too difficult for them to come up with. Okay, so then it has to be a regular shape.
I mean, part of what I'm thinking is on your hypothetical land where you're, there's only a certain amount where you're above the ideal septic tank.
Yep.
You know, it might be this odd shape, and why force them to have a circle, say, within that odd shape when you could simply make the shape out for the, as long as it's within the area requirement? You know, and then.
So you want them to be able to come with any kind of trapezoid?
Yeah.
To me, as long, I mean.
As long as I can draw it.
Obviously, it's a pain in the butt for them to figure out the area, the crazier they make it.
Right.
But the circle implies inexactness, and so that defeats the purpose.
Right. Okay, so makes the circle.
I assume any, I assume any surveyor has a computer program that can just calculate area of a shape anyway.
It becomes, it becomes difficult, though, for the town to enforce when it's too shady.
I would say that, yeah, that there's a.
Or even like on the ground.
Well, here's the deal, actually, is, and this is from current bitter experience. There's two things going on. The engineers and the surveyors can draw, can draw really wacky shapes. That's not a problem. They've got the ability to do that.
They wouldn't though.
No, actually, I've had one that has. The catch comes when the attorney has to describe that shape.
Doesn't the surveyor define that for them?
Well, this is where we've been having a conversation. So the shapes got simplified because the attorney's response was, I can't describe that shape, given the number of, you know, monuments and, and features and, and the parcel that I've got to work with. In other words, I can't say, the shape you've given me doesn't allow me to say, eight-foot elm tree, 270 feet to the, you know, in an easterly direction, and then, um, you know.
Vents, if you must.
Vents, you know, 40 feet to the south, da-da-da, because the, the, the description was just so off, there was no features for them to actually pin the description to.
It wasn't straight lines?
No. There were curves and, well, or there was just enough.
Jags.
Jags, where, you know, it would be like a flag shape, so it would be.
The surveyor doesn't usually do this?
Let's just say that I've now established that there's a back and forth between attorneys and surveyors as to how you can do this. And so, the attorney was asking for simpler, simpler shapes.
With a curve, I can understand that being problematic.
Maybe you can use, sometimes the road curves or something, you can just say, follow the curve of the road.
Right, I mean, abstract.
For 25 feet, or whatever, 125 feet.
Straight.
Yep, yeah.
How, how would you deal with, uh, you know, that house that's cantilevered above?
Clark.
Geez, yeah. I mean, that's insane. That is, that is a hell of a retaining wall underneath that. So how, what would that look like? And, I mean, because it seems like something like that, unless you have really deep pockets, you can't build on any of that. It's, that's crazy.
Yeah, the Berkeley California laws.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there were any.
That's probably more part of the steep slope rule than the subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was it. In that, in that, there was no subdivision as part of that project. I mean, I get what you're saying about if you can do that somewhere else. It would be, that you would show that, that if you were going to build a retaining wall of that size in some location on your, on your parcel, that it wasn't going to interfere with the natural processes or whatever that we can identify. So in other words, that it was, that it was okay, given what else we're concerned about. I think before, just if we can get back to this, I think, I don't think we need to have box, I don't think it needs to be a square. It doesn't have to be that regular, but it does have to be something that can be, um. We need to think about the language. I'm struggling here, so something that we can, that is, that is describable.
Yeah, I mean, I think that maybe we need to have the bigger discussion about building envelopes and what are our design criteria on building envelopes, maybe before we fully.
So you're going to just, so this could be fine as long as we will define building envelope at a date to be named later?
I'm just saying, you could solve, you could solve the description problem as long as you require there to be straight lines, because you can always describe a straight line with latitude, longitude, and degrees.
Right.
And measurements. And then you'd give people a lot of freedom, maybe not absolute freedom, to have any area, you know, lugubrious shape. But that's still a pretty good amount.
Yeah, what I'd say there, I, so, the lines would have to be either straight or formed by a natural, but, you know, like the edge of a creek or, or a road. So what I'm thinking of is, there's plenty of times when the frontage of a parcel follows the curve of a road. That could define one part of your building envelope, and then in back could be a brook, and that's also curved, and that could form the other part of your building envelope. And then you've got one straight line between the brook and the road.
So then, straight lines are natural boundaries and those, and that solves our problems right there?
Yeah. Yeah?
I wasn't quite following that. To me, you went over the brook, and why would you go over the brook?
No.
You're using those as the boundaries and then rebuilding it.
You're using, so you're either using straight lines, or naturally occurring boundaries, or, or road right-ofways as the, as the bound, as the outline of your building envelope.
Well, right-ofway isn't on, just.
Right.
Yeah, that's, the right-ofway is already there, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we really do need to get into that Article Three before, you know, see what it looks like and work with the design standards for building envelopes.
Let me ask one last question that doesn't have to do with design standards, but about building envelopes. If, if you have your traditional large landowner subdividing a couple pieces of what would otherwise be a large plot, and he retains a pretty large plot, if that's what we'll call Lot A, do you have, does he have to put a building envelope on his land or her land?
If it's a pre-existing structure, the answer would be no.
Okay.
But if, if we're talking about the areas where we, yeah, but if, if, if it is undeveloped. So say the scenario is, you inherit 60 acres, and you propose to finance the development of your ten by selling two 30-acre parcels, and it's just, it's just all woodland right now. You're going to have to show building envelopes for all three parcels.
Okay.
What if there's a house anywhere to build a shed on it, or a garage or something?
Isn't the purpose of the subdivision just to show that it's a buildable lot and those other little details?
If it's already developed as a parcel, then, you know, it's not encumbered by anything. You know, it's a zoning question if you want to add a shed to it. If you've got a parcel that's already been developed, and you're subdividing off from that, the, the initial piece that is kept is not subject to the, these parts of the subdivision regulations, because you're subdividing this other stuff off, you're making new lots. That's a pre-existing lot. So it would be covered just by the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wasn't clear. If, when you'd have to put a building envelope on your own house and say you can't build anywhere else, or not.
That's a good question.
Sue told us to come prepared.
Very, very, look, I just want to say you're very, very.
Anything else on building envelopes? If you guys want to move on to the articles. Let's move on to the articles. Oh.
No, do you know James?
Yes.
James, do you want to jump up and hit the mic?
Yeah, I gotta.
You gotta tell your name and where you're from.
James Spanslavin District Two. I'm kind of not sure what you're talking about envelopes, but what if the town takes part of the lot to increase the size of the road? What does that do?
That's.
So say.
That sounds like one we have no power over, and, I mean, I could give you a decent answer to that, but it would probably be wrong. And what we are doing, we're trying to rewrite our subdivision regulation so that when people are cutting up pieces of land, they don't mess the land up. And what you're talking about is the town, through eminent domain, expanding its right-ofways or something else. Would we ever deal with that? I don't think we did.
The planning commission.
Yeah, I think the select board would deal with that through ordinance, and if it ends up pissing a citizen off, the citizen has to go to court and try to get them to stop.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what the Section 502 means. Okay. Boy, am I slow.
I don't think it'd be evasive, but.
No, James, you're great. You always teach me something. Thank you. I'm glad I come to these.
So, this is James. He comes to, what do you come to, about 75% of our public meetings in Broughton Bro?
95.
95.
The 5% not allowed into are the head meetings.
Yeah. He's an enthusiast of local government and.
You're not missing out on anything on the James.
So, anyhow. And you're probably going to be the biggest star of BCTV by the end of the year.
That's right.
So.
That's where it matters.
Yeah, there you go.
Like if you were.
Moving on to Article Two.
Article.
Article One. One, two, and five.
So, now's your chance. Something in here is, like, some C.
Are they different? Has this been changed? It's the original one we got?
No.
Okay.
This Article One is pretty dry. If you guys don't want to talk about it, I, I thought it was sufficient.
I made a, did I make a comment?
Um, you did. I think you capitalized on the, under the.
Oh, yeah.
Numerated part of Section 1.2. I think you had capitalized on.
Right.
Yeah, I, I did that on the other articles too. I just ran it through spell check.
Wow.
That's not my spell check. I'm learning the rules.
So, I mean, Article One's procedural. Why don't we just say that looks okay? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so let's jump up to Article Two. Move right along here. This is good. Just when the select board thought they were done with us, we could come right back. We moved this right. So, what do we think about Article Two, guys?
Did I make any comments? I don't remember.
Do you want your comment?
Yes, please.
You were so prepared.
That was hours ago.
Too soon. Unright.
They were there this morning. Short-term memory loss. Oh, yeah, I just changed the structure of.
Just changed the structure.
Section 2.8b1b from this phrase, unless waived or modified by the DUB in the beginning, to having it at the end. And.
So hang on a second. You take B and you make it the new H?
No.
No, no. She takes the first clause before the comma.
Contour lines at intervals of five feet based on blah, blah, blah.
And then you put.
Unless waived or modified at the end of the sentence.
Okay, that's cool.
Like this.
Oh, down there.
Got it.
And then, on page seven, Section 2.9a. I just wondered, because it says it involves more than 50 lots or five acres.
Whichever is the less.
What about even smaller lots or acreages?
This is the requirement of the National Flood Insurance Program.
So individual little lots that are less than that can essentially screw themselves with abandon?
No, for the purpose.
It happens when we sit at a round table.
It's all right. It's more lively.
I know. I'm not, I have complaints. I think it's better this way.
No, I think, I mean, I think the other ones can go forward without looking at it at the subdivision level, but it would be, you know, if someone was building a house on it or something, that's going to come through.
At the site plan.
Site plan, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Even a single-family home, while it's exempt from site plan approval, it would still need the flood hazard approval. So it would, that would show before the.
We capture all development in a special flood hazard area because it all has to be reviewed, regardless of how small or insignificant it is.
All has to be reviewed by whom?
The zoning administrator and the flood, the, 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 there's a.
State.
State flood coordinator, um, who reviews it. The state has 30 days to comment on any development.
So this section is just if your subdivision happens to have, be in flood hazard.
Yep.
Yeah, just pertaining to the special flood hazard area, right?
Oh, so you're kind of missing a word there. I think you want to present base flood elevation data or something like that. Kind of reads like the Second Amendment. Well, I'm just, it's, there's something missing.
The DUB shall require all subdivision and development involving more than 50 lots or five acres, whichever is the less of the base flood elevation data.
Yeah, it does make sense, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Or to submit the base flood.
Right.
Yeah.
The other part about this is, um. Broughton Bro doesn't permit the build, the construction of dwelling units in a floodway. So, there's a added layer of protection that's specific to Broughton Bro, so.
And they mean it.
Eventually, yes.
We will be trying to expand that when we're done with this project at some point, too.
Right.
Well, I don't, you keep this.
Okay. Anything else for two, for Article Two?
I have a question. It might be a, a question that is obvious, but not to me. What's the difference between a minor subdivision plat, and a, or a minor subdivision and a major subdivision? Is that identified somewhere earlier? I see that on six, and just did I miss?
Yeah, it's going to be in the definition section. So right now, a minor subdivision, I believe, is no more than four acres and that don't require a new road right away.
But if you're, if you're a developer and you're looking at this, how are you going to, I mean, because there's different sections for major and minor sections. Should that be clarified first?
We could throw in a text box or something. We could throw something in.
For the definition of major and minor C sections.
So then I know where I am right at the beginning, and then which ones to go to to read.
A cross-reference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a place for cross-reference, but.
Too much of a logical person.
No, it makes, I mean, having people jump all over the place. A text box could, with the definitions, could be good.
Because it keeps showing up.
Great.
Okay, does that bring us to, that, that might be.
Does that bring us to, that might be useful to put in 2.9 so that people can figure out where the special flood hazard area is to the layperson.
What did we talk about? This is in picky detail, but doesn't say that the drawings have to be to scale ever? Can I just say that because whenever I have to go back and look at a site plan from whenever and I'm trying to use that for base data and they're not to scale it, this is useless.
It does say that the scale has to be not more than 200 feet to the inch. If you don't think it's clear enough, it could be.
Yeah, in major, it says not more than 100 feet.
So you could clarify that by saying drawings must be to scale and specify the other.
Yep. Same thing that what we talked about earlier, that the building envelope, it's anything to scale.
I also see a reference to my previous comment that it's right there in 2.1, section A, right at the last sentence in there, is for the purpose, it says subdivisions may be classified as major or minor.
Right.
As defined in.
Yeah.
Wherever, but I think it would be.
I agree.
Put the definition right there.
Some more exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're up to 5 now? So as long as nobody has anything else to say, I don't. Actually, let me ask a quick question. I'm sorry to move back. Did we, where's the note about small changes like boundary line adjustments?
That is in 2.1C. It's the exemptions.
Sorry. So Article 5. Fire away if you've got something.
I have, but please.
I noticed that.
Under fees, section B, did we want these fees that are to be for an engineer attorney, et cetera, to be an escrow account? Is that what we're talking about here?
No.
No.
That would be more for, this would be fees if there was something special that needed review because of the application, you know, maybe if there's a homeowners association or something and we need to have an attorney review it or, you know, as part of the application, as part of getting approval, those would be fees.
Well, how does that work then? Do you get the money upfront?
Usually bill. Brattleboro hasn't done it very often. It's always been enabled. Have you been involved any where the applicant is paid?
No, no.
In the town I used to work for, it was kind of known that, well, we used to send everything to a consultant engineer and they knew they were getting a bill.
We would like.
The town would bill.
Oh, yeah, because.
We would like that, that practice to be kind of commonplace.
That you put in some money and they draw upon it.
Right.
Okay.
We could, we could establish an escrow system for that.
I think that technically, under state law, the Select Board is going to need to set this up, so it's an interesting conversation to have.
To have, yeah.
Maybe if they go with this, they'll, they'd be more inclined to do the escrow.
And then I made the same capitals on in front of the numbered items. But when we got to section 5.5, appeals to environmental court, I fiddled with the wording. So that number 2 would read, "For all proceedings of the DRB that are on the record, the PLC Environmental Court shall be taken on the record in accordance with the rules of civil procedure." Isn't that nice? And then for the third one.
Is that what you're adding in there in parentheses?
Isn't that nice? I should, yeah. I just changed it a little to clarify that the list of interested persons shall be supplied to the appellant by the administrative officer within five working days. Is that what we need? And to clarify that, just that language a little bit.
So you're saying the notice of appeal should be filed by certified mail, blah, 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 blah?
I'm saying the notice of appeal should be filed by certified mail with the appropriate fees to the environmental court identified at, I don't know, where does one find the fees?
A change.
Yeah, they.
Yeah.
Okay, so there should be some sort of a reference.
To the structure, to the fee structure.
With a copy of the, to the administrative officer and by certified mail, provide a copy of the notice of appeal to every interested person. And then to say the list of interested persons shall be supplied to the appellant by the administrative officer within five working days.
Okay.
Not the words, but you ought to say Vermont Rules of Civil Procedure.
Because they're not civil as other states.
Well, no, there's also the federal rules of civil procedure and it'll probably never come up, but you ought to say the right thing, I think.
Question about fees, should that be in section 5.2?
Clarification of that?
Well, I thought it should be, that whoever is looking up the fees for the environmental court should have a citation right there so that they can look up the fees to the environmental court.
The environmental court fees, which is different, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
If you linked over my judiciary website, they have fees forms and like where you send your mail to.
Okay.
For the environmental court. I'll say that Article 5 read a lot easier than Article 2.
Okay.
It is interesting. It concerns me then that there's something.
Rod wrote 2 and you wrote 5.
5, 5? 5 from the landing.
I'm loving this. Like, oh, yeah. Glad to be right.
Actually, most of 5 came from a manual that the state put out as to easy administrative, but it concerns me that if, if Article 2 is not reading, I mean, it's, it's a little techie for sure, but I do want it to read to.
Oh, yeah. I think if we do the changes that we discussed, you know, text boxes, references, things like that, it'll smooth it out quite a bit.
Works much longer, too.
It is.
It's more to digest.
It's more procedural. Well, I imply it's procedural to you.
Steppy and then some steps reiterating.
Yeah.
2 is really important, though. Oh, it is. And I think it needs to be wordy and well thought out, but.
Is it worth thinking of something like a flow chart for something like section 2?
Well, Article 2, there's, there's elements where I think they could be solved with a checklist.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little, for me, it's just a little difficult to digest.
We did, but, I mean, this is good feedback. I want it to read to the average citizen.
How hard would it be to make drafts of both? You don't have, it doesn't have to be right, but just so we could look at like 1.
Yeah.
Because we had, there was a checklist here and there's so many steps that when you look on it, at it, it actually is harder to read than you would think.
But it was, it was different submission material, so.
I, I don't mean everything. Like, pray that this revision would concern, were considered. We have a checklist. It's, right now, it's A, B, A through E. You know, we add steep slopes, maybe clarify the rights of way. And I think.
Yeah, but that's, that's clear, but.
It's worth, I mean, it's worth giving it a shot. We really want it to be user-friendly, so.
And the checklist, I think, would be better if it was broken up for minor and major rather than having it all in one giant, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, there's going to be basically, certainly places.
Yeah.
It's a standard. Yeah. I think we could, we could approach it, yeah, so separate it up from minor and major.
Yeah. I only read through it once and I, it was just.
Clunky.
Yeah. A lot of it was hard to digest and I thought, well, I'm going to really have to go through this again and maybe even again to just really get it.
Yeah.
Hearing different people's comments helped me, but it, I mean, not being real familiar with it didn't help, but if I was somebody coming in new, that would be where I'd be at.
Yeah, it's a good test. I mean, so if you read through it again and there are things that really.
But I think that major-minor thing, is there a way to clump those together?
When we were doing the town plan, I didn't fully understand what we were doing to PUDs until you guys made that flow chart and I understood it like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Some people get things.
It says a lot about me, but.
That's more visual.
Yeah.
And some people get things visually better than with all the words.
It, yeah, because you know what? What happened was, we were in an early hearing where that kind of ran aground and that, that flow chart was my response to them, the sort of like non-comprehension problem.
Yeah.
So.
Non-comprehension.
Well, this is heavy stuff.
Non-comprehension causes a lot of problems, you know?
Right. So, well, I mean, you know, can, it's our, you know, it's our, it's our job to just be able to describe it pretty clearly, so. Though I thought the chart was helpful in the end and I wish we had have thought of that earlier on, even, you know, to include in the town plan itself, actually.
Well, it's going to come in handy again.
Something like that, I think, would work really well.
Yeah.
Do you think it should be within the article or should we add?
Yeah, I think.
Or.
Right, right there.
With a cross-reference.
Yep. Right. I think it can be, yeah, I think it can be effective.
Yep. And separating out major and minor again.
Right.
Rather than having to flip back and forth and back and forth. Are your glasses really green? Like your, or is that just a reflection?
I have green glasses.
They are.
They're really green. Do you not match your glasses to your binder?
No, not lately.
There are some minimal requirements to them, the design professions are more.
I missed a couple of meetings and I'm running out.
Your glasses have to match your binder, otherwise it's just really uncool.
I see. And, you know, green eyes.
Right. There's a whole lot of considerations. I couldn't do this job because we didn't have the right, you know, color eyes.
Okay. Well, we're still not done. We're still going to do conservation subdivision. So, let's do that.
All right.
We'll pass this around.
I brought my own.
Yeah, it's new stuff.
Is it different from whatever we got originally?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So after today, we'll still have to do 3 and 6.
So this is kind of an introductory, yes, so 3 is the design standard and 6 is the definition.
3 is pretty lengthy, too, so.
Yeah. And this is not, yeah, this is kind of an introduction, so you can take it away and think about it. The gray shaded areas, this is, Rod hasn't even seen that. The gray shaded areas are kind of commentary or things that we, to think about.
Okay.
So we went, at the last meeting, we had decided to go back to having an article with conservation subdivision because it was too difficult to work out separate of zoning flexibility of lot sizes and that's really what we wanted to achieve. And so, you know, there's the purpose and the objectives, which we don't really need to have the objectives in there, but I thought that it kind of adds to what we're trying to accomplish here.
I think that's great because in justifying, you know, to the Select Board, it's great.
Yeah, it's all right there, I think.
Yeah.
Under the public.
Is there any reference in Article 2 to this?
No, and there might need to be. That was kind of the next part I was getting to because there is some procedural stuff with it. This is just going to kind of deal with, with the lot sizes and that kind of thing.
Sure.
And open space design.
Yeah, but you say right in A, conservation subdivision is an option that shall apply to any residential subdivision, so it should be.
Right.
There should be some reference within the other stuff.
When we get to it and we're all settled, I think we're going to have to prove out that the conservation subdivision does each of these bulleted points that we say they do.
Right. That would be almost like criteria here?
Mm-hmm. You know, evidence as specified in our town plan review.
Right.
David Gardenstein wanted evidence that these objectives.
Meet.
Meet have been borne out in, in fact, and it would behoove us to do that.
Not within the ordinance.
No, in the planning world.
But within, in the presentation and when we try to get this passed.
Okay.
So the way I wrote it was to say that it could apply to any residential subdivision, but there are obviously other options. We could require it. I think that that would, the burden of proving it out would be definitely higher. Requiring it for larger parcels of land, so, you know, if it's more than 10 acres or 15 acres, you could require that conservation subdivision be used. Or you could separate it out as, you know, if there's a class 1 wetland, you need to do this on the site, or if there's slopes over 25%, you need to develop in this manner. So those are, those are some of the other options that we could consider.
Have you, has the staff formed an opinion of what is the best planning practice?
No. I, I think that the best planning practice would probably be to require it in certain districts.
Yes. I think it should be required in rural and rural residential.
But not based on parcel size?
I think that anything above the minimum parcel size.
So you'd be out of it if you were a minimum?
If you were a minimum old, okay, so let me just make myself this really clear. Assuming that we're successful in increasing the minimum parcel size in rural residential from 1 and 1/2 to 3 and in rural from 3 to 10, any subdivision in rural or rural residential that is on a parcel larger than the new minimum would require conservation subdivision. So if you had a non-conforming lot subsequent to the increase in minimum parcel size, you would be exempt from conservation subdivision unless some other feature was present, like a wetland or something else, right?
But if you had a non-conforming lot, you would be able to subdivide that.
So, but not, I mean, we're, we're not going to have the ability to know what's going to happen with that, so maybe we should use those numbers anyway.
Just use those numbers?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be 3 and.
I guess the risk there is if you lose the fight to raise the minimums, then people are incentivized to chop smaller.
I think there's going to be a lot of pushback on that, too.
Well, why don't, why don't you just say that it's mandatory in the rural and the rural residential?
We talked about it before. It was concern over, you know, of the homeownership, the homeowner association, you know, those kind of management are difficult.
What, what argument would there be against requiring it district-wide? What are you trying to avoid by not doing that?
Because you need to manage the open space in some way, so you're going to have to either set up a homeowners association, get somebody to purchase an easement, but there's some sort of management is going to have to go on within the subdivision.
Will the town accept the open space?
That's a, that's a question.
That could be a big, big issue.
It is, it could potentially, yes, you're right. I don't think the town is going to. There's a couple, there's a couple of factors that are winding in here that we should probably just flag because when it comes to the change in the subdivision and the zoning regulations, both of these are going to come up. I'm glad Liz raised it. So one way of viewing a requirement for open space is that it actually in some ways reduces the value of that land because it's not developable. So if we're requiring the designation of open space, then by implication, you're reducing its value and then by implication, you're reducing the value of the parcel of land, which means that the, in terms of the grant list, it becomes, you know, something that the town, it's a burden, it's arguably a burden on the town, right? In other words, if you could take 2 points in time, 19, you know, or 2008 and a 30-acre parcel and its value, because it could all be developed into, say, 3-acre parcels in the rural district, it could be worth, I don't know. in the rural district, it could be worth, I don't know, $250,000. And then we make this change and then the most you could develop it is, you would end up leaving, you know, having to leave something like, you know, half of it, 15 acres as open space. The owners would make the argument that that's worthless and they don't wanna pay the same taxes as if it was developable.
But wouldn't you also be able to cluster?
Yes, I would, my response would be, you can more intensively develop the remainder. It's not as if the, it's not as if it's not, it's not as if it's gonna be worthless, it's that that open space is integral to the use of the entire 30 acres and therefore that change in value is not diminished because of the designation of open space. But we're gonna need to be prepared for that discussion.
Well, maybe one of our guiding...
The good news is, is we'll probably encounter this with the EPA workshop.
Yep.
One of our, maybe one of our guiding principles or objectives should be that the requirement for open space in the conservation subdivision doesn't reduce, would not reduce the number of developable individual lots.
It may reduce the number of individually developable lots, but it shouldn't reduce, it shouldn't reduce the number of the density of housing units or, right?
It should increase the density of housing.
Yes, it should be a density bonus, basically. Right, so that's what we'll also try to guarantee.
Why wouldn't you be able to guarantee to someone that they have the same number of buildable lots?
I'm just thinking of a scenario where it might be that you end up with...
Because you have a big swath of wetlands there that hadn't been recorded in any other fashion.
But the most plausible development might be a, you know, a row of townhouses or condos, you know, like shared wall or, you know, an arrangement where you've got condominiumized property because of the nature of, you know, to do with the landscape. You've got large open space and you've got, you know, three, three house sites that could be duplex or single-family home and then you've got five terrace, you know, five sort of houses, you know, like townhouses to join together on one parcel and the whole thing is condoized.
I would think that'd be a choice if you're gonna have less, you know, building, like in that scenario, it's a choice. I wonder if it wasn't, I'm just kind of working through this, if it wasn't a really large parcel, say it was 15 acres and it's in the 3-acre zoning, so technically you could get five lots, make them smaller, but if they need, you know, if you're, if you're dealing, if you don't do a community septic or the developable, it, it, there are ways in which it maybe could, you couldn't really fit those five lots in a smaller clustered area because of their well and septic needs unless they did a community septic.
What if we said unless the conditions on the parcel prevent it, you have some guarantee that you'll be able to organize smaller parcels so that you'd have as many developable lots, developable lots on your property as you would have?
There's something about guaranteeing that number of lots that...
They said we don't wanna get into it.
I don't quite know what it is, it's different than saying density.
Yeah.
It's, it, in my mind, it, I can't put words to it, but it just signifies something very different.
You just promise something. And then you might have to be compensated for the, when that promise breaks down.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, bottom line, I guess I'm reticent to promise something that I, I'd really need to sit for a long time and figure out whether it was always gonna be true.
Well, maybe if we just made it a goal rather than a guarantee.
I mean, I think if I was gonna draw an emphasis or if I was gonna place an emphasis on something, I prefer to place the emphasis on density than parcels, right?
I understand what you want, but I'm trying to think of the perspective, from the perspective of someone who would be critical of this because they're fearful they're gonna lose what they want. And if you had any of your, your objectives, say, rather than a hard and fast rule...
Doesn't density imply similar kind of thing, though?
Yeah, it does.
Well, you know, my father's a developer and he always thought that he was gonna get more lots than he actually got. So, I saw, part of that is just, you know, wishful thinking, but...
Yes, I, I should say that it's been, more than one occasion, I've had to remind a potential developer of the challenging problem of access to each of the individual parcels. That would be a road that was missing from their original conception of how to actually come up something. So, yeah.
But that's how they're gonna look at any change.
You're right.
I think it's one of...
They'll be as liberal with their criticism.
Yep.
Oh, it's a good point.
Can it be?
Yeah, it's kinda strange.
I just think we oughta have something that, that we can point to. Even if we're not saying, well, we guarantee that you'll have as many parcels as you did before. If you put it in the objectives, say, then you could say, well, as long as there's a way you can do it where you don't interfere with the natural resources, then the DRB should implement that objective and give you the maximum number of lots.
Maybe it could be some sort of text box explaining that, you know, with every subdivision, there's sort of a, nicer way to put it, but a reality check that certain things fall out and you don't have the yield that you...
Is that number of, number of parcels based on the 3-acre zoning? So, if you have 200 acres, 180 acres, you'd have 60 units. But you would cluster them so they don't have to be 3-for-millions, turn the rest into conservation land?
Right.
Right.
But 60 units on...
180 acres.
And, and, but what I'm saying is that if, even if you developed it, that 180 acres, subdivided it in the traditional way, you can't promise you're gonna get 60.
Right.
Which, so, it's the comparison of those two, I think, should be the subject of some sort of explanation.
Right.
You're not always gonna get that, that back-of-the-ensemble yield that you thought you would.
You could do the yield plan, yeah, you could do the yield, there's a couple of different ways. You could do a yield plan where you're then taking out the non-buildable areas. So, you know, slopes over 20%, you know, immediately you take that out of your calculation. Or, you know, hydro soils and that kind of thing. Yeah, you can take out it, you could do a little factor for the roads. I've seen them do that as well. And then you can, once you start doing that, you might get a more apples-to-apples...
And the engineers would be thrilled because then they're not, you know, the messenger that gets shot.
Yes, right.
I mean, I tried to keep it simple like ours. We don't do that, some, some towns do their, do soils-based zoning like that.
Yeah.
Town I used to work in did. We don't do that here, so I tried to keep it consistent with how we have it now.
Wait a second, aren't you already guaranteeing what I said under 4.4A? Granted, maybe I should have read this before I spoke.
Base number of dwelling units? It says base number of dwelling units, but it doesn't say base number.
Oh, as opposed to parcels, okay.
Oh, I'm looking at two 4.4As, that's why I'm confusing.
Oh, I didn't notice that there were two 4.4s. Sorry, the first 4.4.
The other 4.4. All right, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the number of units is that you're guaranteed to be equal.
Right, so that's not too bad.
It's what Timberley said, it's units, not logs.
Right, so I think, I think here, actually, I'm, I think the idea of a yield plan is a good one because it actually initiates the dialogue and I think, you know, it's, it's a pretty loose point of comparison. But I mean, the reason why the Putney Road project has to go through Act 250 is from the northern end of the Veterans Bridge to the southern tip of the existing roundabout is more than 10 acres of blacktop. And it's one and a quarter miles long. So, that tells you, I mean, that's a fairly extreme example of how big a road is to service however many parcels. But, you know, it's interesting, it's important to remember how much land is taken up by a road if you're servicing, you know, more than four or five parcels. It's a really big deal. So, yeah, the note, you know, I know in abstract, yeah, I've got 180 acres, that gets me 60 house sites. Well, not really, you know, at best, probably somewhere between 45 and 50 on a good day if you do really well. And I'm sure, I think I've, I have, I've seen developers sit and sort of try and shorten the road distance by coming up with really complicated compositions of parcels because every, every foot of blacktop is, you know, huge in terms of cost, right? So, so they wanna have as short a road area as possible without minimizing frontage. Frontage is also the way you value the parcels, right?
Well, how are you gonna prove this out? Does the engineer have to develop the two alternatives, conventional and, and conservation?
That would be how you prove it out.
And wouldn't that be an expense?
That's an expense that is not desirable. There's other ways to do it where you can, after, I mean, the model that I've based this on, so you assign some sort of factor to different things, so then you start subtracting out. Maybe that's the way, rather than...
Yes, right.
I mean, it still results in the yield, but it's a mathematic equation.
Not a, not a plan-based.
We could look at that for the next meeting.
You wanna avoid them, you wanna avoid the cost of them sitting there with alternate versions of drawn plans going, some, some, something, you know, something between A and B here is probably gonna do it and, yeah, that would be expensive.
If it's their expense, is there any reason they couldn't choose between the two?
We want them to choose conservation.
No, 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 between having their engineer figure out how much, how many parcels...
No, you can have them choose. You can lay out two methods and let them choose which one.
Right, like if you don't wanna have to pay the engineer, you can do the, the formula.
Yeah.
And if you want your engineer to do it exactly, to try to squeeze that extra number out.
Oh, go, to go for it, be, you know, set aside the formula and do it yourself on plan?
I mean, if we think that's reasonable...
No, I think just stick with the formula. I mean, I would say that there'd be so little variation in the, here's the yield, here's the formula to establish the yield plan for a conventional subdivision and then here's the yield plan, which you are gonna have to work on, it's not gonna come from a formula for the conservation subdivision. So, in other words, all you're doing is using the conventional as a guide, right? And it doesn't have, it's illustrative, it's not regulatory in any sense, right? The real thing you're being judged on, the application that you're being reviewed for is the conservation subdivision. The, the conventional plan determines what the potential yield could be with the conventional approach.
I think, I don't know what you're talking about and I'm talking about something else.
Okay. Why don't you tell me what you're talking about?
I don't really understand this yield thing.
I'll come with more information on you.
And it just kinda bounced off my skull and I'm still thinking about what I was thinking about before, which was the number of dwelling unit issue.
Oh, you're still on that, okay.
Yeah, and the need to prove it that Liz mentioned would be a pain for potential developers. And I thought...
I think that's what I was trying to answer as well.
Oh, and I thought that Sue said there's this formula that you can use to simplify it.
That's, yes.
I thought you were talking about that, that I wanted to get home before jeopardy.
I'm sorry. And I, okay, well, maybe then you were answering me, but I just didn't understand it.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to...
I think I was trying to...
There's the formula and then there's like doing out a plan.
Right.
But, but, I mean, we've flagged it, this is the first time you're looking at it. I'll send more information on how you can, what are the different ways for...
Okay.
I would, if I were the developer, I'd be suspect of the formula.
Yes.
And I'd want my engineer to do it.
That's what I'm thinking, especially for a potential high-value...
That option.
Yeah, I think that should be an option, even though it's an expense.
If you were to do a luxury development or something luxurious where only a certain area had room and you really were trying to squeeze out each parcel, I would, I was doing that, I'd be pissed off over some formula if it was otherwise okay.
No, I think that the way that the model was written is it does allow, you can choose. You can go this way, but if you wanna spend money, you can go this way.
Right, I mean, it's no skin off our back.
Right. Okay, that's cool.
And this incentives thing seems to me to be the great counterargument to the suggestion that a parcel would lose or a group of parcels, a subdivided piece of land would lose value because you can actually get more homesteads or dwelling units in there.
Yep.
Shouldn't it be 25% rather than 20, though?
Can be.
I think it should be because you can get the...
Can I show you one?
I'm on the first 4.4B.
Right in the middle of the page.
And it says you can't exceed 20%, but if you go down and look, there are two separate sort of sub-incentives. You can go up to a maximum of 15% if you're doing a good job with your open space and up to a maximum of 10% if you're letting the public use the open space.
So, that totals 25.
And I just thought, why not give people the full 25 if they're really working to make their land conserved and open to the public, you know, let's give them their money for developing it.
Maybe there's, in addition to the question about whether or not the town will accept this public open space, maybe there's particular foundations or open space conservancy groups that might wanna be, would it be appropriate for them to be approached to see if this is the type of thing that they would be willing to participate in?
I think, I think it's gonna be on a case-by-case basis for them.
But in general, would this be this type of thing that they would do? So, that when this is being reviewed, you could say, well, X, Y, and Z are open to this.
Yeah. Vermont Land Trust is the body that I'm thinking of here that would typically be involved in these kinds of things, which is not to say that there aren't some others, but I think they're the obvious one.
Just the River Conservancy.
Nature Conservancy.
Nature Conservancy.
Right, I would say...
BHCB?
Not sure.
I think they have.
They have in the past, but I don't know, I don't know what circumstances.
Yeah, I don't either.
And right across the border, there are a bunch that are really active, that are kind of not-for-profit, but they also attract state support through Massachusetts and local communities, so they'll combine resources. What I'd say with VLT is that they generally like really big parcels. I think it's the cost and complexity of the legal work that they do. They find that the reward, I'm assuming this is the case, actually, I should say, I'm assuming. I think that they find that it works for them above a certain minimum size and it's very difficult or they're not, you know, and they're also interested in other more conservation goals such as protecting larger chunks of land.
In the working landscape.
In the working landscape.
Kipton.
Kipton.
Yeah, farms and forests.
So, maybe we should have a text box kind of explaining that when we get to that?
Yeah. What I would say, which is interesting, is in communities out of this, I mean, I don't know, it could be true for other communities in Vermont, but I'm wondering if Whitefield or something has done this. But in communities in Massachusetts that I've worked with, the equivalent to our office would include a concern or an interest in actually identifying potential parcels of land that they would be interested in buying the development rights to and/or working with, so working with developers and/or land trusts to piece together contiguous parcels so that some well-established and well-recognized conservation goal is being achieved.
So, this is municipal employees whose job it is to do this?
Yeah, or you can use consultants and they're, they're commonplace in the lower, in the lower heart.
Lower 48?
So, in Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts, there are consulting firms that specialize in working on conservation projects as part of the development process. So, they would find ways of ensuring the protection of open space as part of the development process.
They're also sometimes looking for contiguous pieces for wildlife quarters and various other kinds of things.
So, the municipality might have a much more subtle and more, a deeper knowledge of the landscape and what, what the community has established is important to preserve. And then it's a matter of over many, many years, talking to the property owners or whatever, realizing, you know, they've reached that point in their life or something when they wanna sell and then you come up with a deal that's gonna preserve the conservation values of that parcel while allowing some development rights. And then there's the other one, which is, what is it, the trading of development rights?
Oh, transfer.
Transfer development rights. Transfer, transfer development rights.
I would, I mean, our conservation commission is interested in-
In doing that.
-identifying parcels and figuring out what people's long-term plans, you know, to try to make matches if, if there's-
That's interesting.
What, yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
What would happen if you subdivided under this, under the conservation subdivision article, and then you ran out of money and never actually did anything?
Well, if you never ever actually did anything, maybe you just did some paperwork or something, I mean-
Yeah, what do you-
I mean, let's say the DRB, the, the DRB approves a subdivision.
And then it never happens?
And then nothing happens, or very little happens.
Well, it's recorded with the deed.
Deed, yeah, right. At some point, well, this is what it means by nothing. If you go down and you file something in the town clerk's office, and it gets a stamp, and it gets put away, and you do absolutely nothing about it, and so you pass away, and then your children go, that was crazy, and sell it, whoever buys it is still bound by the requirements that are filed in the town clerk's office. You can't just go, hey, that wasn't me, I want a holiday in right there.
Oh, I understand that.
Right.
I'm just kind of curious.
Whomever buys the deed, that has to proceed-
With the deed as it stands.
No matter how much time has elapsed, even if it were, you know, from yesterday to however many years.
So does each parcel have in its deed the number of dwelling units that would be allowed on each individual parcel?
No, this is a calculation that comes from the zoning, and you would establish that at the point where the applicant goes-
You meet all the site plans.
Yeah.
Then what happens if developer number one fails, and they're like, well, just sell the parcels off? What, what, what is a buyer faced with?
The same rights and obligations as the seller, effectively.
But how can you tell whether you can construct a building on one of the parcels you're buying?
Well, you can establish whether it's a buildable lot.
That's going to be established through the subdivision process. And then, because this is, because there is some sort of open space management going on here, there actually will be, you know, there'll have to be some sort of, either homeowners association set up, and that, you'd want all that paperwork done upfront, and that's going to appear in the deets for the property. So they'd be responsible, or, you know, if you were so lucky to have a conservation organization, take over your, to manage it. But it's, it's a little bit complex.
Right, you can't, I mean, what I'd say there, James, is for it to be saleable, so if you're the developer and you want to sell it on, you know, either individual parcels or the whole thing to somebody else, it's in your own interests to delineate buildable lots. And, and so when you're working with the professionals, you want to make roughly sure that each parcel can accommodate a home and a septic, that, that a driveway could be built, you know, that, that, you know, that you've got access to the parcel that's not encumbered by easements or, or other problems, that you can construct a dwelling, that you could run a power line to it, that you could find a well, build a septic. Because that's what, that's what, that's the thing that puts the value on the parcel of land in the first place. So if you're going to come along and buy it, your first question's after you get out of the car, can I build on it?
Yeah, first goal first.
And it's like, you know, and so that's the judgment that the buyer makes, oh, yes, this is big enough, yeah, that's the drive, that's where the driveway would come, that's okay, good, that's where the power pole, the closest power pole is, that's doable, okay, I can build, I can put a septic here, I can put a driveway there, I can put my house here. And so even if the original person designing the subdivision just vaporizes, is abducted by aliens, all that stuff is still, you know, the, the material that any subsequent buyer would look at, either the, a new developer who wants to buy the whole thing, or individual parcel buyers, because they're still interested in the same thing.
But frankly, I think that this is one of the reasons I'm hesitant to, at this point in time, have it be required. It's not the type of subdivisions that we've been having in Brattleboro, we don't have an active developer community.
Have what be required?
Have the, the conservation subdivision be a requirement. Because I just don't think we have an active developer community.
Kind of subdivision.
I think that this is the type of subdivision that a developer undertakes, not a homeowner that wants to, you know, cut his land in five. Now, it can be an option for that person because it is a better way of developing, but there are complexities that come with it that make me a little-
About making it mandatory? Is that what you're saying? So you ask?
Yeah.
Might it make more sense to have it be like over three or four lots?
I would say, whether you want to, I don't know if I'm that comfortable even here with determining a minimum number of lots. What I would say is, going back to other examples that I can think of, this is clearly, you know, the upfront costs involved in doing conservation subdivision are higher than a conventional subdivision. There's some planning work that has to happen, and some inventorying work that has to happen upfront, that you could reasonably expect to get a return on when you sell a parcel because you'd be selling them for more than you would otherwise. So in other words, it's not for amateurs, and it's not necessarily suitable for a very small area.
Yeah.
Unless there's some other set of attributes, like a really amazing view, or, you know, river frontage or something, right? And then it's kind of squeezed out. So what I'd say is, you're really looking at the original size being somewhat bigger, and that, that there are enough things of value on that land that make it worth preserving. And that could be any number of things. That could be farmer Sally out there somewhere off Ames Hill Road, and actually, what they're going to do is preserve their own farm fields, and the slope behind it is where they're proposing to put the houses, on a slope that they cannot use for agriculture, but that have other attributes. And what they're doing is, is extracting the value of the view across their field, which, you know, certain people find really attractive. So there's a way in which it actually works for some existing landowners in a really cool way, and it wouldn't be that complicated to do. And then there's others that's much, you know, we're talking about more difficult access, or some other set of natural attributes, like a brook, or a pond, or a stream, or something, where they, those, those features are attractive, but they also set up challenges. And so the ultimate price that you'd want to get for the building sites, I'll leave the word parcel out, just building sites, is somewhat higher than a more conventional system. But I think in both cases, we should probably have fairly strictly controlled conventional subdivision tech, you know, tools in place, because-
And that was the thought behind the building envelope, is that it was a way to-
Control that.
Kind of get at some design issues and control it more, but not be so rigid as.
So might it be better for this to be an option in rural and rural residential and requirement over a certain size?
It could be an option everywhere.
It could be an option.
An option everywhere, and-
Sure.
You know, I think that the one factor that you, this is the other weird part about the conversation with land development in most of Vermont, I would say outside of fairly peculiar communities like Stowe and stuff, density bonuses don't really work here. And so in a tighter market with more heat in it, you, the, the bonus means more because 25% of an already bigger number is a really big thing to get, whereas 25% of practically nothing is practically nothing. So there's a way, there's a sort of a peculiar way in which the whole formulation of this assumes that you're on kid card, or, you know, somewhere where there's enough action going on, where people are going to take this on, because they know they can get a return out of it that more than compensates for the extra work. And I don't know if we have enough action here.
But one thing, I think Sue mentioned that with the building off requirements, it cuts down on the cost of this, because you've already identified the natural features.
Yep, yep. Yeah, so I'd say that what we're trying to do is, in the conventional subdivision stuff, is actually incorporate some of the things that we've, I mean, the, the good news about going backwards and forwards between whether we should have conservation subdivisions only, or conservation subdivision as a separate article, or however we're going to construct it, is that we've taken some of the things that we think are important about conservation subdivision and incorporated that into conventional, and the building block would be one of them.
What this is then doing is giving flexibility of lot size, which conventional doesn't give you.
This just sounds to me like more of a big lot kind of thing.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely.
I think, I, I would look at this and almost imagine a PRD, you know, cluster-style developments, like straight up. So to go back to the farmer example, you know, six homes arranged around some kind of attractive natural feature with the view over farmland, you know, up relatively high, not land that the farmer can think of doing anything really, you know, high value with. That means, you know, they've got access to cross-country skiing trails or something at their back door.
Or access to food on the farm.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I mean, they've created developments like that out in Illinois or Indiana or something, or wherever it is, I forget, I read about them.
Yeah, there's some paint fields in Western Mass that, you know, were preserved for-
A place called Prairie Village, wherever that is, they've done that.
Before, before we break, why don't we think of a draft number? And then we'll think about it and come back.
A draft number?
Minimum, to require.
To require.
Yeah. I mean, we don't have to be, we don't have to be bound by it, but sometimes I think it's useful to put it in there to think about. I always think of 30 acres, but I don't know what everybody else thinks.
40 acres.
40 acres. You're the pro, let's do 40.
I was talking about reconstruction.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right, this is a history book.
I didn't hear the mule part.
Okay. Should we require mules?
The other question is, is-
I drag a lot of stuff here.
Is there, is there a separate element that would be in here to encourage people to give up flood property, flood lands?
Um, no, not, not as written, yeah. Do you mean as an incentive, or as?
Some sort of compensation, is that what you mean?
Just as an incentive to have people give up land that's, is that going to be part of like the flood hazard rule, or something like that?
No, it would be in here, like incentive to include that in the open space, or?
Well, the thought is just that there's properties that are in the flood hazard area that would be nice to, for the town to take, or to otherwise have removed from development, and that's going to happen.
Well, I think that that could come from the yield plan, or, you know, some yield approach that we could restrict, you know, you'd have to take that area out of the developable.
Wouldn't this be better addressed through the reanimated Fuville Origin Hazard Zone, hopefully?
Maybe, so, hang on a second, let me back up, so thinking about this.
That's what you were talking about.
Yeah, I was just talking about that there were areas that really should be flood storage.
Okay, so what you're, so what you're saying is that the land that's, the land that's shown on a special flood hazard area map that may or may not include Fuville Origin Hazard.
Within the 500-year storm.
That would, yeah, that would work towards calculating your yield, your total yield, but would be excluded from your, you obviously can't develop in it, and so if you don't touch it, you count that land as if it was part of the land that you could get a yield from.
And you did restrict it, so that it becomes flood storage.
Yeah.
And the incentive that the developer gets is more units elsewhere.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly what I mean. So it accounts towards a yield, it accounts towards a yield calculation, but you can't-
So it just should be like one of the criteria with which you can-
Right.
-segregate your land out.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I'm trying to think, actually, I mean-
And then nobody has to buy it.
Right.
There was actually probably areas in West Brattleboro that fall under that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I can think of, I mean, not by the Chelsea Royal, when people wanted to put, I mean, that got bought by two different people, but, I mean, the original was to put a commercial building there, but the other was to put houses there, too. And that's really flood storage area.
Okay, that would be nice.
I think that was productive a couple hours. Do you guys want to talk about anything else before we go home?
No, should we go over the design, the standards for next time?
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all have them from previous.
Uh, yeah, probably, I probably have got to do some work on them, so.
We could probably get three and six in the one meeting, couldn't we?
Six is definitions.
Yeah.
I mean-
Six is the criteria, right?
Well, I'm not sure that I'm done with six. I kind of plop definitions in as I come across them, I think it's probably less, I'd rather come back with another, with more discussion of conservation subdivisions.
Yeah.
And Article 3.
Okay. Okay, so four, three.
So you want to build, you want to write the whole thing and then make sure you have all the definitions?
Yeah.
Three and four for next meeting.
I mean, if you, if you would like, I can send out Article 6 right back.
So if we do three and four next meeting, that would put us in position to have the draft document with it, with six, two meetings from now, right? I mean, if it, if it ends up not working out because you guys don't have the time, you know, that happens, I'm just trying to-
We've got two things. One is time, which is actually less of a constraint than the other one, which is we're trying to, we're trying to stall, but the building blocks-
Which is the 17th.
Thing, which is the 17th, we think could shed some really interesting light on some of these topics.
17th of March?
April.
April.
So we could have a text, like a draft of everything, and just hold it until the-
Yeah.
Sort of be circulating.
Right, I'm not suggesting we vote on everything in two meetings, I'm saying it would be nice to have a draft all together that you can read like a book.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's up to date, yeah.
If you guys go to the 417 meeting and say we should tear it down, fine, you know, we should have the best product, but I just, if, if it looks good after that, I want it, I think it'd be good if we were in a position to get it right out.
Yeah, I agree.
Because we have a lot of things to do under our newly-minted town plan.
And we've got a lot of years to do it, so.
Well.
So then we'll, we'll put this to rest and move on to the next thing, and then wait to the 17th to bless it.
Yeah. Or at least after the 17th, but I think we could get some important, there's a couple of things, we can get buy-in-
Yes.
-through the process of the 17th, and we could get important insights from the process on the 17th.
Is it 16th evening and 17th day, is that how that works?
Yeah, we're not sure what's going on with the 16th yet, but the 17th is day.
Yeah, just going to see for the minutes.
Just the reason I'm anxious about going fast here is because with the town plan sitting out there, the things that are being considered are not going to be considered until we do them.
Yep.
And I think that plan means a lot to all of us, and especially the staff who did the most work on it, and I feel we have an obligation to them. If those are the best practices, if those are the best thing for the future of Brattleboro's development, we should at least get it in front of the select board, you know, if they tell us it's bad and they don't want it, fine.
Right.
But-
The new select board is, what's the quaint term, seated, or the end of?
After town meeting, the first meeting after town meeting.
Which is also the first meeting in April.
Yeah.
And so I'm thinking, maybe you should, we should discuss with you, James, a couple of things. One is that the first sort of order of business for them, you know, is that they're acclimate, and there'll be a training for them, there's-
Three new members.
Three people without, and they don't have background in municipal government very much at all, so I think that the training for them will be pretty intensive, I'm hoping it will be. And then we would like them to participate as stakeholders in the workshop as well on the 17th. And then I think we should think about how long, you know, what, what process we use to bring a, you know, revise set subdivision regulations before then, and how much background preparation we should undertake. So in other words, I'm thinking, what, in terms of, in terms of, what's the earliest we could imagine going to the select board with the hearings?
We have to have our own public hearings, too.
It's probably June, by the time we hold our, it's like, if we hold this till after, if we don't finalize it at the planning commission till the end of April, maybe the beginning of May, then we could have a hearing in May, which, and they have to have it 15 days before a hearing, so I think June is the earliest.
So I think it's plausible that July or August even, before they get to- So I think it's plausible that July or August even, before they get to consider subdivision regulations officially.
Let's take this, let's take this one step at a time. We'll try to have the book by the 17th, then we'll try to incorporate what you guys learn, or anybody who goes on the 17th into it. And, you know, do it as quickly as we can, reasonably.
Yep.
So it's subdivision, and then zoning, and then flood?
Whatever we want, next.
I just, there was a schedule, I don't know.
I think, we, we've batted backwards and forwards at the idea of doing the zoning as a whole, except for the flood and you entering fluvial erosion hazard as something separate, or just a special flood, flood hazard area section.
When it goes up to the select board, we'll be in the position like we were with the town plan, where we have meetings, where our main thing is in limbo, and we're kind of stuck with nothing to do. And we could sort out that decision then.
Yeah.
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 I don't like to kick the can, but I don't want to get us on too many things either.
Yeah, I think, yeah, okay.
Well, for now, this sounds like a, a good plan, and we're on our way.
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion on my agenda. Second.
All those in favor?